Today to give thanks, thank you for the food that was provided today and the students and faculty and even people that walking off the street they got to eat today to, uh, to receive a blessing. May we be blessing to others because we've been blessed. Guide us today as we do the work you've called us to do. I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
James.
Follow me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in honor of the Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
As is our custom and our courtesy, we offer opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board. Is there anyone wishing to do so? Seeing none, hearing none, we move to the chancellor's update.
Thank you, sir. Uh, last week, sixteen of us from the college, uh, members of my cabinet, as well as other key leaders within the institution, uh, traveled to Austin Community College for a day of peer-to-peer learning, uh, where we discuss topics such as HB eight as well as some other, uh, some other topics. And so it was just, uh, it was a great opportunity to, um, meet with their team and talk about what they're doing with advanced manufacturing, the Center for Teacher Learning, uh, data, and some of the other things surrounding House Bill eight. It was a great opportunity. One of the things that we've learned with House Bill eight and the expectation from the state is that as we continue to implement House Bill eight, we just completed the first year, is that we would learn from one another. Uh, that being, one another being the institution. Some are a little further along than others. Uh, some were at the forefront of, of the implementation and the planning, serving on committees, et cetera. And just, and some have, uh, implemented best practices that they're sharing with others. So it was a day well spent. Uh, we, we really enjoyed it. Our team has made contacts. Uh, they, I, I believe they will have lifelong contacts or at least as long as they're at Central Texas College, um, to share with them. We, we actually were, were able to share some things with them. Uh, they're, they, um, they were very hospitable. Like I was able to have a one-on-one session with their chancellor, Dr. Uh, Russell Lowry-Hart, and that was very, very productive. So, uh, we will do that again. We will, uh, engage other institutions. We've already been contacted, uh, with regard to one of our programs in industrial technology about seeing how we do things. So it's, it's an environment now where we, we need each other. And so it was, it was a very, very worthwhile, worthwhile visit. We also got to, uh, tour a portion of their Highland campus and their make-it center. You know, the, the Highland, the old Highland Mall was rehabbed and is now a premier educational con, uh, complex. And so we thoroughly enjoyed, uh, reviewing that space as well. Um, also it's, you don't see it here, but Mrs. Ms. Havens has provided you with the list of student recognition dates for upcoming graduations, departmental, as well as our fall graduation. And at this time, I would also like to remind everyone of the foundation lighting of the Bell Tower event next Tuesday, December third.
Thank you, ma'am. It's nice when people cooperate with each other, isn't it?
Yes.
All of us could learn some lessons from that.
Absolutely. Collaboration.
Dr. Welsh?
Yes, sir.
Is it, oh, next week?
No, I'm sorry.
Third.
The third. I think I'm rushing Thanksgiving. I do apologize. December third. I apologize if I confused anyone.
They're, they're checking to see if they're.
I know, I know.
Dr. Welsh. Fall enrollment update.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Carter. I hope y'all enjoyed your Thanksgiving meal. Okay. Uh, I'm here today to present on the fall enrollments to date. Okay. Uh, this slide that you are looking at, uh, are there, are the CTC worldwide enrollments comparing this fall to last fall? CTC is slightly ahead of last fall's enrollments. Although the difference in the number of students is minimal, our students are enrolling in more courses this fall. Currently, there is, uh, a three percent increase or in the number of course enrollments and a two-point-seven increase or twenty-one hundred, uh, semester credit hours increase. Okay. And the worldwide enrollments include Texas, Continental, anything in Texas and outside Texas, plus our distance learning courses. In addition, our enrollments are the fall enrollments to date as of last week, and we actually have another term, we have two more terms starting December the second and a mini term starting December the ninth. And although we are registering, okay, we should pick up some additional enrollments. Okay. This next slide, our, our total Texas onsite and distance learning. Uh, this, uh, represents what happens inside Texas. Okay. It includes both the onsite and the online courses. And again, today, there's been an increase in students enrollments and semester credit hours. We have two-hundred-and-seventeen more students today, to date, and we have one-thousand-one-hundred-and-two, uh, course enrollments, higher than last fall. Okay. And we had almost thirty-three-hundred, uh, semester credit hours increase. Okay. This next slide is just to give you a snapshot of how many online students we have. And the students, these numbers are actually included in the previous slide. Uh, and so like even though there is sixty-nine, oh, sixty-nine-hundred students, but those students take courses, classroom courses and online courses. Okay. And, um, it represents again a little difference in the number of students, but again, students are taking, uh, more classes than last fall. And to date, we had a four-hundred-and-twenty-two increase in course enrollments and an increase of semester credit hours of twelve-hundred. Okay. And this next slide are our Continental and Navy enrollments outside Texas. And although it represents a decline, we have to keep in mind that we closed many of the Continental sites. And last December, two thousand twenty-three is when we closed Fort Campbell. So that's it. And also, just keep in mind, many of these students that are on, are on CTC onsite courses enroll in our distance learning courses. It's not unusual for a student to be enrolled in a, a classroom course on, you know, Fort Bragg and then also, well, we don't even offer Fort Bragg, but a classroom course, maybe at Fort Knox, and then an online course. And the same thing here in Texas. We'll have a student take a course at Central Campus, Fort Cavazos, on online. Okay. And this last slide is to represent the number of dual-credit high school students we have, uh, this fall to date compared to last fall. And almost eight, eighteen-hundred of our students are enrolled, high school students enrolled in dual credit. And they could be enrolled on this campus via part of the early college high school. Okay. Or they could be enrolled in classes taken in the high schools to include Copper's Cove and KISD in our service areas. Okay. Uh, do you have any questions about the enrollments?
Yeah, I have one question. Uh, how does a central campus registration compare now with twenty-twenty?
There's been a significant change in the number of walk-in students. Most everything's done by appointments now, but even, you know, we, we'll never close our doors to walk-in students.
I'm not talking about that. I'm not, total enrollments compared twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty. What, what is, where is that?
I do not have that information with me.
Could you get it to me, please?
Yeah, certainly can.
I'm kind of interested because we had a big drop because of COVID, and I wonder how long it's taken us to get that back, if we did get it back.
Yeah. I, I did do a comparison of last year, twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay. Uh, but let me see. I might have your fall enrollments.
Okay. Well, that's all. We could do it offline. That's no problem.
Okay. But I think I do. Let me see. No, I, I don't think I do have it. Okay. I was hoping I did. But I can bring those to you. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a question, if I may. Um, the type of engagement that we have with the various, uh, places that we go find students, whether it's high school or, uh, military installations or where we find them, what's, what type of engagement do we have with those entities? Maybe I'm not, maybe it's the wrong question to the wrong person here, but, uh, I'm just seeing, okay, do we go out and visit with the, like the high school or the Navy and, and, and be present? And so if there's something that we can do to maybe help that from our perspective to try to.
We do, uh, have recruiters here on Central Campus, and they do, uh, and even our academic advising and our mission staff, they do go out to the high schools to do recruitment. Uh, we're still trying to get our road shows back on, and we have a, the road shows that will be going to the high school. And, you know, we have the instructional departments there. We have almost all the student services departments there. Uh, but that stopped during COVID, and it's been difficult to get that back. Okay. And at the military installations, Dean Hare would probably be the best one to answer that question. But I, I know that she does have staff there.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have, we have representation at the, the huge, um, uh, I don't know what it's called, but where they are recruiting, there are colleges from all over that are there. You, someone from this organization is present, correct?
Dr. Garrett, would you come forward?
Yes.
College fair, duh.
Yes. Um, we have, um, a big recruiting fair in, in Bell County, and we attend that. And our recruiters are out and about at all the schools. Um, they have the daily meetings and things that they go out and take care of, working with students, working with the counselors. We also have a counselor's breakfast once a year where we bring in high school counselors here so that they can learn about new programs and things that will help get their students into college. We work very closely with the high schools and, um, but as, as Dr. Welsh said, for the, the service area, well, not service, our continental sites, Dean Hare handles that with, with site directors. Uh, we have site directors out there. And then, um, our service area is, is managed by our, uh, non-credit side of the house, and, um, we have site directors out in the service area also.
If I can add with regard to the, uh, the continental site location, so all of our personnel are housed on those installations in the education center. So they have direct access to the soldiers and their family members when they walk in. And then our staff are also invited to various educational fairs.
Okay. And I would presume at each of these locations that like they're, uh, welcoming seminars for new people at that installation.
Right.
Our guys are there saying, hey, we took a CTC. Fabulous.
Yeah.
You mean like the newcomers on, on the installation? Do we, are we participating in that? Uh, someone there to talk, or the ESO or whomever is doing the presentation would add us into what's being, you know, as if being. The way they're being indoctrinated into their new surroundings.
Yes, we are a part of that. There is more competition, uh, than ever before. And so, uh, but we are actively seeking out in my role in the transition. I'm making outreach to the ESOs at each of our sites, and we're bringing in new classes. I'm excited. It's not going to bear out and show you this until next year, but they are asking for new classes, new enrollments, and we expect you all to see a, a significant uptick in our enrollment, um, next, this time next year.
What I thought, I think what Brenda was asking was that when, uh, when, on Mondays, I think they do newcomers orientation on Fort Hood, uh, Cavazos, uh, do, does CTC have a, a briefing time, like a ten-minute brief time to get, hey, welcome to Fort Cavazos? Just to let you know, we have Central Texas College right off post and on post, so you can further your education, help get promoted.
Right.
That's easy, that's an easy brief right there.
Yes. There are certain ways that they allow us to have access to the soldiers. We do have our, um, we put up new posters and new material that we're putting out, but they designate when we can do that. So we are not, because we're not the only facility, um, the only provider, we just don't have ready access to come in and present that way. Believe me, I asked. Um, but we, we are putting together, um, some new and innovative ways to make contact, um, and trying to recruit the families. So I'm really understanding exactly because I thought, hey, let's just do that. And they have rules that restrict us from just having open access because they're open to other educational providers, and they're about fairness is my understanding. But, um, I still think that you guys will be very pleased with the direction that we're going and, uh, the new programs that we're being, classes we're being asked to offer. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rose, we have, uh, CTC instructional program update.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm going to provide an update of the, uh, new programs and revisions. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather. Of new programs and revisions that, um, we, uh, that have been approved through our Curriculum Review Committee on September twenty-seventh. Uh, the first program, I think I got a, there we go. Okay. The first program will take effect spring twenty-twenty-five. That is a revision to the AAS in Aviation Science. What, uh, the change was, we added a spring, uh, start to allow two semesters instead of one for private flight. And then as of fall twenty-twenty-five, the Horticulture Development has added a certificate Level One. They've also added a Horticulture Technology Certificate Level One. These are both stackable into the AAS Horticulture, and they can be, uh, completed within the first and second semesters. And then the next programs are Social Media and Digital Marketing Design, a Level One certificate, Social Media and Digital Marketing, another Level One certificate, and then Social Media and Digital Marketing AAS. These programs are a hundred percent online. Uh, this, uh, Level One certificate is stackable into the Social Media and Digital Marketing AAS. And then the next, we have the Community Health Worker, uh, Level Two Certification, and then the Community Health Worker Associate of Applied Science. This program provides self-care to underserved communities. The Level Two Certification is stackable into the Associate of Applied Science and Community, Community Health Worker. And then, and then moving on to the new programs, we have, um, we have, we have a couple of OSAs here. Occupational Skills Awards, Automotive Engine Repair, and then we have Automotive En- Entry Level Service Technician, Automotive Electrical Theory and Diagnosis. These were all OSAs. These are stackable into the Automotive Technician, um, Level Two Certificate, and also into the Associate of Applied Science and Automotive Mechanical Technical, uh, Program, so the student can go straight into the industry. Then we also have the General Framing Carpentry. This is an OSA. This is stackable into the Associate of Applied Science and Craftman Trades, the, uh, Level Two Certificate, and also the Level One. And then the next program is Business and Truck Mechanics and Diesel Engine Specialists. This is an Occupational Skills Award. We have Vehicle and Mobile Equipment Mechanics Installer and Repairers Occupational Skills Award. These are stackable towards the Diesel Engine Technician, Level One Certificate, Level Two, and Associate of Applied Science and Diesel Engine Technician and Maintainer, so that the student can go straight into the industry. Then we also have the Graphic Design for Print Production Specialization. This is an Occupational Skills Award. There, we also have a Pre-Press and Print Production Specialization, OSA, Wide Format Graphics Specialization, another Occupational Skills Award. These are stackable. They go into the Level One Certificate and the Graphics and Printing Associate of Applied Science. Okay. And then also, uh, with new programs, we have a Residential Air Conditioning Technician Assistant. That's an OSA that is stackable into the Associate of Applied Science, the Level Two Certificate, the Level One. And this is an industry-specific, um, Occupational Skills Award. We also have Structural Iron and Steel Workers Occupational Skills Award. This is stackable into the Associate of Applied Science, uh, Level Two Certificate and other industry-specific OSAs. And then we also have Drafting Completor and Drafting Completor, Drafting and Design. This is a Level Two Certification. This is stackable into the AAS Computer-Aided Draft Design, and this is designed for industry completors. For the revisions, starting fall twenty-twenty-five, we have Commercial Art. Um, what happened here was they removed Arts thirteen-eleven, which is Design One, and they added Arts Selective. So the student gets choices of the arts classes they want to take. And then the next, uh, four, uh, degree plans, we removed Speech from these, and then we added Creative Arts and Technical Business Writing to the Cyber Defense, Information Technology, Network Systems Administrator, Network Cloud Support and Cyber Security. And then for the Computer-Aided Drafting Design, this is a Level One Certificate. The title changed to Computer-Aided Mechanical Drafting and Design. We, and then in, within the program, we removed, uh, Math Machine Drafting and added Pipe Drafting. Oh, still on that one. Okay. And then, um, the Horticulture Associate of Applied Science, a revision was made to that to accommodate, uh, both of the Level One certs. Okay. All right. And then we also had a special called, uh, Curriculum Review Committee in October, and the programs that were approved were Child Youth Services Program Assistant. That's a Level One Certificate. This program is for our students in Europe, and it's stackable into the Associate of Applied Science and Child Development. And then we also have Applied Behavior Analysis Technician, Associate of Applied Science. This program was created to meet, um, the need in the field for our behavior technicians in childcare. After forty externship hours, the student can apply for a paraprofessional registered behavior technician. Um, and then we also have, um, Specialized Manufacturing, Automotive and Robotics Technology, the Smart Program, Associate of Applied Science. Uh, Dr. Cruz Sealy is going to talk to you more about this later, uh, but I'll give you a, a small overview. This is a stackable, uh, this is stackable into the Level Ones certificates. The student can take drafting, uh, solid modeling, design, and earn an OSA, and drafting and design, and the student can also take, um, robotics mechanic, mech- mechanic, mechanisms, and earn a certificate in robotics. And then the last revision that we have is the Emergency Medical Associate of Applied Science. Um, there, there was a recommendation to remove the science classes, and this recommendation was made by the EMS, uh, Medical Director, and classes were replaced by Pharmacology in Advanced Practice. And then some programs that are planned, um, these programs were presented at our September, uh, Curriculum Review Committee, but there were questions and they needed to go back, uh, to the departments to, uh, evaluate this a little further. We're expecting these to be ready by the February, uh, Curriculum Review Committee. The first program is Early Childhood Education, Business and Occupational Training. It's a Level One Certificate. This, um, program was employer recommended, uh, for well-rounded Director of Childcare Centers. Um, and there's also business classes that are included in this degree plan. The second program is the Child Development Leadership and Management, Associate of Applied Science. Uh, this is another program that, uh, was changed, was created due to industry changes, and they're wanting to see, uh, the students come out with more leadership and management, um, for the positions of childcare directors. And then the final program is the General Studies and Pre-Health Science. It's a, it's Associate of Science. This is a pathway for health career fields that are not nursing. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Is there going to be a test for us on all this?
Multiple choice. Thank you.
Anyone? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This is just a general throw-out statement, but it'd be interesting to know how many students actually sign up for each one of these categories of classes to get an AAS. I, I think we need a correlation. If we got the classes, how many people are taking advantage of it? If we could.
Track it.
Track that. Yeah. Thank you.
One else. Dr. Garrett, you have a Self-Evaluation Assessment Report.
Good afternoon. Um, before you, I've provided the, uh, your self-evaluation, the board's self-evaluation report. Um, what I would like and ask you to do is to fully review this. Uh, and then, uh, in consultation with, with Reverend Towers, we'll have an executive session in January to complete the process because we have to do the complete, um, cycle of looking at what you had selected to work on in twenty-twenty-three, what you did to accomplish those goals, and then from this report, determine what you want to work on for twenty-twenty-four. So, um, we'll do an executive session in January to review that. Um, the information on that, uh, what you selected for twenty-twenty-three plus previous years begins on page twenty-nine in this, uh, booklet. It's straight to the end of the book. So I hope you enjoy reading it.
There will be a test.
There will be a test on, in January.
Any other, any questions anyone has? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burton?
You have a, uh, Board Document three-three-seven.
Yes, sir. This is for the annual approval of the investment policy that's required.
Fifty pages worth that you gave us.
The, uh, the legislature wasn't in session, so there were no, no changes, and we didn't make any changes. So, but we still have to approve it, or y'all did.
Questions, comments?
Thanks.
Yes.
Question?
Yeah, I've got one question. Um, in Section Five, the policy, uh, called Amendment, it says the policy shall be reviewed on an annual basis. Any changes must be approved by the Board of Trustees as well as the individual or individuals charged with maintaining internal controls. Now, this may be a direct lift out of what we've been done for the last sixteen years, but I don't remember it. And I don't understand how we apply this. How does this work?
I guess they're saying that, uh, that I would, that I would have to approve it along with you.
Well, I'm saying is if the board approves it, can this person veto the board's approval or vice versa? I, I don't understand how to apply it. How do we actually do that?
I think you just keep on doing the way you've been doing it, approve it.
Well, well, the caveat on the general saying is that we need to know. If, there's no if, ands, or buts, or guesses, I think so's. We, we actually need to know because this can affect us.
You need to know what?
If.
Is the language correct?
Correct.
Still have to the attorney. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know how we would vote on that if that came to a vote.
I do not look at this ahead of time to compare it to any statutes, so I, I will happily do that before next week and let you know. And if, if we, if there are any recommendations, I'll let you know.
I just, I just want to be sure that we don't have any stumbling blocks or Saks people come down here.
You whipped us into shape, guys. Now, this, this would get you more trouble with, uh, our, our external.
When do you think this thing was written originally? Right after the Great Depression. I've never seen anything so risk adverse in my life.
Every, every, every now and then, they'll make an, they'll make an adjustment or change to it, but hardly, like in the past three or four years, they haven't. So, you know, they got you. They're, they're pretty strict, and they're going to probably keep it that way.
I mean, it, it looks a lot like some trusts I have read that were written in the twenties and thirties.
Yeah.
There's no more kept up with the market than boot.
Sounds like we have.
Part of that is the Texas Legislature that tells us what we cannot do.
Yeah.
Under the Texas Government Code. So it's a bit different than the foundation. The foundation is what you're, you're happy with, but they have different rules than we do.
You know, if we actually could use the, uh, methodology that the foundation uses, we would be making three or four times as much.
Our, our TRS.
Now, y'all do a great job in laddering and doing everything exactly like they, like they teach it, but.
It's also cost us a bundle. Yes, it is.
And it's not really of our choice. It got crammed down our throat.
You're correct.
We talked to them now. Send Charles to the next legislative meeting.
I'll talk to every legislature where I can find, and I can't get anybody willing to take them on, so. Let's keep talking.
So the dilemma of being a Texas institution.
Yep.
Thank you. Firearm system upgrade. Mr. Jordan.
Good afternoon.
Good.
I'm here today to present on the upgrade on our fire alarm system. Ten years ago, we replaced all the panels, but we have some twenty-to-thirty-year-old infrastructure away from the panels that we're not able to, uh, really facilitate anymore. We can't buy parts for. So, uh, we've gone out to bid. Um, it's a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar upgrade and it's with impact fire, so. We just need to upgrade the infrastructure so we can buy parts to keep it going for our fire alarm system plus our emergency management system as well.
Anybody have a question?
Is this because we have so many boilers scattered out?
No, sure.
If it, if it were heat pumps and all electric, would we have the same problem?
Yes. Yeah, it's just the fire alarm system itself. Where, where your beacons and some of the wiring, whatever, is just dazed out.
Anyone else?
Would this impact the insurability on any of our buildings? We have these policies that cover a lot of stuff.
Well, up to, up to date, we've been able to, you know, piece together, you know, and keep the system up and keep, keep our insurance group happy. But it's just gotten to a point now where it's, we just need to upgrade the equipment. It's proprietary, so you know, after a while, it just goes away. Unfortunately, we can't, can't get, get parts for it, so we have to.
It exceeds, it exceeds making the insurance company happy. All we need is one incident where someone can't get out of the building or is not notified. And we can take, Dr. Carter can take the keys with him. It's, we'll be closed. They'll take everything.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaines. IBM Flash System.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. It's good to see you all today. So this first item is about expanding capacity of our IBM Flash System, which is our central data storage in the data center. You know, when we buy, excuse me, when we buy computers anymore, they don't even have discs in them. They don't even have storage in them. They go into these chassis. And the chassis connect up to this central storage device, so it's high capacity, high speed. And it has to be that way because of the way we virtualized and the way things work these days. So we actually have sufficient capacity with what we have currently in the flash system to keep doing what we're doing. But I mentioned a data project in this little report. That project is related to, I would say cyber resiliency is what it's about. I don't really want to get into a lot of detail about that. But we need that capacity to move forward with this project. And that project is to make us more secure and more recoverable in the event of a disaster. So what we would be purchasing actually are seven, ten terabyte flash board modules, and that would cost us seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And then that would max out the capacity of that device as well. So.
Questions?
So we're gonna be asked if we're for or against flashing?
Yes, and I hope it's for. Because it's important to flash these days.
His interpretation of flashing.
Not your. We know that the technology is already improving. With this right here, it's already outdated. And so we keep adding stuff to it, and it's gonna be outdated again in another ten years. Ten years, you're gonna have to get a whole new system. Why not look forward thinking about getting the system that we can just download, upload everything to it now and give us a little bit more time down the road instead of trying to force, because this is outdated.
Well, we've had this system for about three years, I believe it is. I mean, we expect a useful life of a total of seven out of most of our equipment. This is gonna give us what we need over that period. In about three or four years, it will be time to replace the central storage. But this is sufficient, you know, for what we, for what we're doing right now. And it works well for us.
Anyone else?
Just a comment. I've said to, to Clifford in, in one-on-one, but when he comes to the board to, although we're not approving it today, when we, when he presents to us, I, I trust him to know what he's talking about, what he recommends. So I just want to thank you publicly for what you do. Because you know more about this, that environment than anybody in the entire room. So when you come to us asking to keep us safe and keep our records safe, you're gonna always have my support.
I appreciate that. I appreciate these comments. And it does change incredibly fast, you know, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to keep up. And so there, you know, you leap forward and then by the time you, you fall back and then you leap forward again, I mean, that's, it's a cycle.
Next item you have is the switch replacement.
Yes, this is about the IBM Storage Area Network Switches. And the reason for this is not because these aren't sufficient really for what we're doing. Let me take a step back. The, these SAN switches stand between the device I just talked about and the computers themselves. So this is kind of the means of communication for the servers to talk to that high-speed storage. And these unfortunately, or IBM has any support for them in May of 2025. And so it's not that they're not of sufficient capacity or sufficient speed. It's just they're not gonna be supported anymore. We've had these for about seven years, which is typical, but we, we would try to get more out of that if IBM would still support them for another year or two. But they're not, and you don't want to be in a position where they're not putting out fixes, security fixes, firmware fixes. That's just not a good place to be in, and so it's time to, to buy a new set. These are the SAN sixty-four B seven model. They are faster. And they're better in a number of ways. We won't really be able to appreciate those gains for a couple of years because the other systems we have are not sixty-four, but they're slower than that. So as we upgrade those, they will appreciate the gains that this offers. And this would be two of those switches. The SAN sixty-four B sevens at a cost of a hundred and nine thousand dollars. And this would also be purchased via DIR contract.
Questions?
So they're gonna withdraw the support from both of them in next year?
Yes, sir. May of 2025, they will cease. Any updates, any fixes, any patches, they will just cease. And so it becomes, becomes a security liability at that point, and it starts to become a functional liability because whatever goes wrong with it, it's gonna stay wrong.
So the replacement, what would be the lifecycle for the replacement? Seven years?
Seven years is what you should expect. We often get close to ten. We get upset if it's less than it's up. So that's kind of the way that works.
Anyone else?
Quinn. Just had one quick question. When we, when we replace these, will they get, give us trade-in value for the equipment we trade in for them?
Sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. We're not for sure yet about these. The really larger devices, that's when that tends to happen. But IBM tends to do that more than other companies do, and so I suspect that we will get something for it.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you all.
Dr. Sealy, we have a new program proposal. SMART.
Make sure I have all my ducks in a row here. Okay. First, thank you for seeing me. Esteemed members of the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Carter. First, I'm gonna say Happy belated Veterans Day. Thank you so much for your service and the service that you did for our country and, and for what you do for our institution. So I am, oh, I'm Dr. Cruz Sealy. I'm Dr. Audrey Cruz Sealy. I've never presented before in front of y'all before. I am the Department Chair for Mathematics, Robotics, Drafting and Design and Engineering. And hopefully soon to be SMART. So given the rapid advancements in technology and the increasing demand of skilled professionals in the manufacturing sector in Texas, we are asking to equip our students with the knowledge and hands-on experience necessary to excel in this high-demand field, which is advanced manufacturing. So there is an industry demand. I want to highlight a couple of things. You've probably heard that Samsung is coming to, is it Taylor or Tyler? They both exist in Texas, right? It's Taylor, okay. So Taylor, Texas. Samsung is gonna be coming in within the next year and already anticipating over three hundred jobs in advanced manufacturing, specifically in the field of semiconductors. We also have, in Waco, we have a manufacturing going up with graphic packaging. I don't know if y'all heard that that is coming into Waco. They've already posted in thirty-seven percent of the jobs they posted are in advanced manufacturing. We also have, of course, automated, automotive manufacturing with Tesla and Rivian in Austin, Texas. And so we want to make sure that we are along that curve and, and we're meeting that expectation. So by offering this program, we can contribute to the local economy by providing a skilled workforce that attracts manufacturing companies within the region. So we are requesting SMART, which is, we're calling it specialization, well, it's called Specialization in Manufacturing Automation and Robotics Technology. The SMART program will provide students with interdisciplinary approach. And we have in your packet the degree plan. This degree plan is combining some, with the advice of our advisory board, drafting courses, and they wanted to highlight to make sure that the students can draft by hand. Also, two D using AutoCAD, also three D using solid modeling. They want them proficient in robotics, so we do have robotics courses within the degree plan as well. And that is using the manufacturing robotics arms, the ones that they programmed to create chips or whatever the case, whatever we're manufacturing at the time. And also manufacturing courses. To successfully launch this program, we will require a faculty with expertise. So we are asking for a faculty member in advanced manufacturing technologies. We will require equipment in order to build what we're gonna call our SMART lab with, has things like ten sal machines. We already have robots. We have two on campus. We already have drafting tables. That's also on campus. So we're taking what we have, but we also need the manufacturing equipment as well. We are also exploring potential funding sources such as grants. And we've already started talking with partnerships in industry in order to create internships and honestly pull them in as adjuncts. Any of y'all engineers? No? Oh, no. Pull y'all in as adjunct instructors. So we are considering a phased implementation starting fall 2025 with your approval. And so the establishment of SMART will not only enhance our academic offerings, but also position us as a leader in the workforce development in our community. So, yes, I'm here for questions.
Should we approve this recommendation next week? What is the peer pressure or peer review process for getting it official?
So from my understanding, after you approve it, then we would just go for board approval. And CRC has already approved it. Yes, CRC has already approved it. And so then we can just go ahead and start building the courses.
We have Saxon.
Oh, Saxon, Corning.
Yeah, I've got, I've got two questions.
Sure.
First one is how many students do you anticipate?
Absolutely.
To be here on September twenty twenty-five?
Fall twenty twenty-five. So we have already done a poll for our drafting students who, and robotic students who are wanting to, wanted to be in manufacturing, but we did not have the program. So we're actually anticipating about twenty, ten to twenty-two students to start.
Start with.
These are already in our system.
Yes, sir. They're already here. We, we just don't have a manufacturing program, so we, they're in the drafting and robotics program currently.
Yeah, next question is, in the documents you provided, you've got the Texas Hortage and Cheseport Corning Board sixty by thirty Texas Plan, but it's dated two thousand and nineteen.
The sheet?
I want to make sure.
Okay.
This document that you're gonna have us approve is square with the Texas Hortage Country College Board. Have they updated their two thousand and nineteen data based on input in Taylor, Texas or whatever? Are we sure we've got the right data here is what I'm asking?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is the most updated one. I had to look because I wasn't aware of the sheet to be in my.
Yeah, it's here. It says two thousand and nineteen.
Updated twelve thirteen two thousand and nineteen.
Lots happened in technology in three years, so would you double check to make sure?
It's the correct.
It's the same program?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I believe that date's just the form.
It's just the form date.
It's not the date that they gave us.
Well.
But yes, I did check.
Remember we're talking about the Texas Hortage Board, okay?
Yes, sir. I did check though, because I did, I wasn't familiar with this form when I filled it out, so I did check. It is the latest form.
Thank you, Rex. Anybody else?
Yeah, are we still having the robotics Olympics for the high school kids?
Yes, sir. We're actually looking into a grant to help us fund our, we had them before COVID and then it kind of died out and the students weren't allowed to travel and come. But we are looking at, we do have a grant to get back in it, so we're super excited about that.
Kind of grow them that way too.
Yes, sir.
I probably want to give you my son's business card.
Sure, I'll take it.
He's an academic advisor for a school of engineering.
He, he could be a part of our advisory committee. I'll take him. Yes, sir. But so, well, hopefully we'll receive this grant to be able to purchase the new robots that students create and, and because ours are a little bit older. And so, and then start doing the competitions again. We're super excited about that.
Anybody else? Thank you. Let's roll in. Not buying more airplanes, are you?
One more.
Right.
Yeah.
Hello, CDC Board of Trustees. My name is Abe Molina, Department Chair of Aviation Science. I'm here to present the RFP twenty-five zero zero three. This item is something that we have discussed last fiscal year. So it's basically just renewed for this fiscal year to do the same thing. So the solicitation RFP twenty-five zero zero three is meant to cover airplane engine overhaul and replacement services. The following memo will include two requests that will be requiring individual votes. And I will explain in a moment how they're gonna be breaking down. The following contract aims to request the, and aims to maintain the efficiency of the process in which we order and receive the expected and unexpected components in order to keep our maintenance delays low. The department has budgeted to be able to buy the next expected engines that will be required to have an overhaul made. So the purchase of the engine, aircraft engine overhaul replacement services will be used on an as-needed basis, dependent on the needs of the program for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, with one optional period of extension if exercised from September first, twenty twenty-five to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So next week, we'll be bringing forth the recommendation to award the following contract to two vendors. One is going to be aircraft, America's Aircraft Engines, which is going to be multiple aircraft. It is Piper Archer Engine for forty-one thousand five hundred, Piper Aero Engine forty thousand dollars, Vulcan Air V one engine forty-one thousand five hundred, and Cessna three-ten engine forty-four thousand five hundred. And the request number two would be for signature engines for the Cessna one fifty-two engine, which is thirty-one thousand five hundred. And cumulatively, the contract will not exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. If you have any questions for me, I'm very happy to answer them.
So if we don't invest in engines, we have a fleet of gliders.
Correct, and we don't want that.
You can get down in them, but you can't get them up in the air easily.
We want them to keep them healthy, as safe as we can. Yes.
Are these engines currently needed to be, to be repaired or you're preparing when they do?
I'm preparing for what I need to. You know, we, we do have suggested times that the manufacturers put in and what time they need to be overhauled. And there's times that this may be less than what they recommend, depending on the compression tests when they are done. So we have to be ready just in case.
Other questions?
We had a similar type of contract that wasn't engines. I don't remember that one.
Oh, you're talking about last month's?
Yeah.
It was for regular aircraft parts. This is for an engine overhaul.
Okay, and you mentioned the compression test on the engine. I guess there's the phase of the cycle times that you gotta watch for, takeoffs and landings and how long they've been in the air and then maintain based on that.
Correct, and depending on the engine model, it can range between twenty-four hundred hours or it can be seventeen hundred hours depending on the engine model. Every hundred hours, the, the engines are checked for compression, oil residues, various material that may be coming out of the oil, you know, oil changes that happen every fifty hours. So there's multiple things that we're checking very often. And from the past, we had situations where that engine needed to be grounded earlier than what the overhaul recommendation time was.
About how many months or so do you get on an engine?
An airplane flies about seven hundred and fifty hours a year. So we're looking at every two years, see if everything goes well. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, just a quick question. Engines themselves under this contract, we're getting an engine. Does that give any support, like ground handling equipment and personnel to take an engine out and put an engine in?
So our staff, our mechanics will take care of removing the engine. And the vendor will include a crate what, that will be able to haul the engine. And it's a special crate that keeps it steady as it's been shipped out. And once, basically what, what they do is they, they take our engine, they service it, overhaul after a certain. overhaul after a certain number of days, and then they will return it to us for our mechanics to reinstall on our aircraft.
Using mechanics as plural? How many mechanics do we have now?
We have one full-time and we have one part-time mechanic.
That still bothers me.
Yeah, we need more.
My first potato, and after I got commissioned, we had two airplanes, two 019s. We had two pilots and four mechanics. We've got, what, 43 pilots and one mechanic? That doesn't rat out, folks.
And doesn't the number of?
There's a number of mechanics determine the number of instructors you could have?
The number of what? I'm sorry?
Instructors?
Well, it's more the number of airplanes that are in service that will determine how many mechanics we will need. At the current size, we would need an additional mechanic to keep up the operation and to alleviate some of the workload that our current mechanics are going through.
Is that a curriculum we need or have?
We're in the talks to create something related to mechanics as well. Yes.
I told Mr. Molina earlier that my wife and I were having dinner at Outback, and our waitress, when I asked her, but tell me her story, she said she was a student at CTC, and she was in this program. And I said, "Well, how do you like the new planes we have?" She said, "They're new planes?" I discovered she's early in the program. She probably hadn't even been to the hangar yet.
Well, so what happens is that the airplanes that we acquired, they're used in the second semester, well, for them actually, at the conclusion of the second flight course. So she's going to be seeing that airplane in her training for the flight course number three and also number five. She's still on first course right now.
You can tell her that I announced her.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Anyone else?
Get her good and with her classmates, right?
We are using the planes. The planes are flying right now, right?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, no problem. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Carter, you have a couple of things about boards of directors.
Yes, it is time for you all to cast your votes for both the Bell County Board of Directors and the Coria County Appraisal District Board, and you have those in front of you, so.
Let's deal with the Bell County Board of Directors election. Is there a motion?
No.
Can't make a motion today. Will there be a motion is what I meant to say.
Your recommendations?
Anybody have any recommendations for us to consider? Okay.
Didn't you recommend?
I did. He's on one. He's on the ballot.
We do have one? Coming?
We do. Okay, it's on the ballot.
All right, let's do Coria.
I won with DelW Treadway, and all 156 votes.
That'll be your recommendation next week. Any other observations or comments about that? Time for topics for upcoming agenda items.
Yeah. Negative, sir.
Our plate's full.
Okay. Don't forget that next week, we have the board meeting, and then we also have on the agenda of the program, a board meeting for Tuesday, December 17th. Any other questions, observations? Meeting's adjourned.